To the allegiance of the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the source of justice and of mercy, of law and of compassion, we pray. In my own faith tradition, communities across the world this week will read the story of the revelation at Mount Sinai, a moment of awe and wonder where a tribe of liberated slaves encountered the transcendent in the wilderness. From that encounter and from that moment of deep listening emerged Torah, the name of the most sacred scripture of my tradition, which in Hebrew means "learning" or "instruction." Our response to that moment of connection with the infinite is to stand in reverence and then to reflect upon laws and statutes as well as narratives and stories that can help repair our world so that it stands in consonance with the call of the divine. In my faith tradition, we believe that that moment of encounter still echoes today in every human heart. If we listen deeply enough, we can hear that voice reaching toward us through time. It is a voice that calls us to fight for justice when we see oppression. It is the voice that demands compassion on ourselves and on others. It is the voice that tells us to call lies lies and to call the truth the truth. It is the voice that demands we speak and treat others with dignity because the image of the divine is present in every living being. May the work you do in this chamber never diverge from that calling. May all of your disputes be for the sake of hearing that call more clearly as reflected and refracted through the gift of our diversity. May you guide our city toward a vision of Tikun Olam, a world whose brokenness is repaired. In the words of the prophet Micah, "What is asked of you? Only to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with the divine." And let us say amen.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Any person who takes any action to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbia City Code 2317.12 - 12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbia City Code 2311.21. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions by my colleagues? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, we have Resolution 001X-2018. And as I read some, offer some remarks, I'd like to invite our guests up to the podium, please. President Angela Williams of AFSMI Local 1632 and Robert Davis of AFSMI Ohio Council 8 and the multiple guests that you have with you, please. Resolution 0017X-2018, to recognize and encourage participation in the AFSMI Minute of Reflection on February 1st, 2018. The American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Union is the nation's largest public services employees union, with Local 1632 representing many workers employed here at the city of Columbus. This Thursday, February 1st, AFSMI International will hold a national minute of reflection to recognize the vital services provided every day by public services workers and to remember and pay tribute to the dedication and sacrifice of the labor movement's founding members. In particular, the lives of Robert Walker and Echol Cole will be remembered. While working with Memphis Public Works, both men tragically lost their lives on February 1st, 1968, when their obsolete truck malfunctioned. In response, 1,300 AFSMI Local 1733 sanitation workers went on strike in protest of dangerous equipment, poverty wages, and discrimination. This strike resonated nationwide, and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. went to Memphis multiple times to join the cause of the striking workers. It was at one of these actions of solidarity when the greatest advocate in American history for racial justice and low-income people, that Dr. King lost his life. Just two weeks removed from the tributes and calls to action during Martin Luther King Jr. Day, we cannot overlook the interconnected nature of Dr. King's cause and the labor movement. The founding principles and work of AFSMI and all organized labor in the United States continues today, and the Minute of Reflection is a time to recommit to the important and ongoing goals of ensuring dignity, safety, shared prosperity, and social justice and racial justice in the workplace for all workers. This year marks the 50th anniversary of the accident that killed Mr. Walker and Mr. Cole. The Minute of Reflection will honor their memory, but it also will recognize all public services workers who have endured dangerous working conditions. I had the pleasure of meeting with President Williams earlier today, and she reminded me of really what's at stake in the Janus decision that will face the Supreme Court soon. This notion that somehow public services workers don't need representation, don't need union representation. And I plan to also reflect on that idea and the importance of the labor movement for all workers in the Minute of Reflection on February 1st. So President Williams and Mr. Davis and all the guests here tonight, thank you for being here. Thank you to you and your colleagues for the work that you do every day, often with few accolades, to ensure the health, safety, and prosperity of our community. Before I pass it to President Williams, pass the microphone to President Williams, I would like to move for adoption.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
President Williams.
Thank you so much. It's my honor to be here. President Harden, Councilwoman Brown, and entire city council, thank you so much for this opportunity. I just want to say thank you. We are here to recognize, thank you for recognizing this resolution, recognizing our fallen brothers, Echol Cole and Robert Walker. They too were martyrs of the civil rights movement in 1968. We, the members of AFSMI Local 1632, stand here in solidarity with our brothers and sisters of AFSMI Local 1733 of Memphis, Tennessee, and all public service workers, recognizing their great sacrifice and being pioneers of our great union AFSMI. I also like to bring Robert Davis up to speak more about the reflection of that minute, to remember them. So thank you so much again. And I also brought a couple refuse collectors here to let you know that it's still important because even though you don't think about them, but you do miss them if they don't do their job.
Thank you, Angela. On behalf of AFSMI Ohio Council 8, the parent union of AFSMI Local 1632, we'd like to thank you once again for this proclamation. We'd like to thank Councilmember Brown, President Harden, and all the members of council for recognizing the important work of AFSMI members like these, and also all workers, because we need to keep in mind that that tragedy happened in 1968, but to this day, there are many public service workers and private sector workers who are killed on the job. And the need for representation on the job is needed now more than ever. So again, thank you very much for the proclamation.
Are there any comments for my colleagues?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember Emmanuel Remy. Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. I do have one resolution this evening, and I would like to ask Mr. John Ellis, as well as all of the mentors and mentees of Josiah Mentoring to please come to the podium to accept this honor. We have Resolution 0020X-2018, to commemorate the leadership of the Josiah Mentoring Program in honor of National Mentoring Month and to recognize its 13-year commitment to making a difference in the lives of young men. And I'll just briefly talk about some of the accomplishments of Josiah Mentoring. Josiah Mentoring was established on January 16, 2005, and is currently under the leadership of program coordinator, Mr. John Ellis. Josiah affords young men between the ages of nine and 17 a positive outlook on life by providing them access to optimistic adult role models that support and help young people achieve their goals. The mentors are uniquely positioned to provide youth with safe yet challenging contexts to explore interest areas, along with engaging the youth in activities. And the mentees will be prepared to overcome barriers to success and to develop strong character assets necessary for success in college, career, and building a better community. I would first like to move for adoption of this resolution.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. The floor is yours.
Ms. Page, City Councilwoman Page, we thank you for this opportunity to highlight our youth and our programming, because one of the reasons is, a lot of them haven't been to city council. And some, are we at court? So I think it's a wonderful opportunity to see what you do here and for us to talk about it, and maybe some of you to come and visit our program and speak to our youth. And we thank you for your recognition.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ellis. If everyone could briefly introduce themselves, and I know Nashan is going to speak briefly about his experience, and I also believe you want the young men to share their pledge.
Yes. I've been at Josiah for three years now, and I feel that they help, like, they help encourage us to keep trying in school, and they help encourage us to keep trying in other activities. And lately, we've been talking about our goals, and they're helping us set our goals, and they're going to help us be successful.
What's your goal?
My goal is to get a 4.0 this semester.
Pledge.
I will not let the changes stop me from rituals already mine.
I will.
I am more than conquer.
I owe.
I owe to my forefathers, I owe to my family, I owe to myself, of all, I owe to God. Settle for average.
I will.
Well, thank you all so much. I don't know if there are any additional comments from my colleagues. President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Page. I just want to join you in welcoming the young men of Josiah to city council chambers, and just put out again another note of appreciation to the mentors. We believe in this community that mentors really do change and save lives, and the fact that you men have stepped up in the lives of our young men in our community really speaks to really what we're made of. And these young men are on a good start because they have you in their lives and the fact that you have their back. So thank you so much for all that you do as mentors, and thank you guys and welcome. This is your chambers. So welcome back anytime. Councilmember Page.
Councilwoman Tyson.
Thank you. To Mr. John Ellis, I wanted to say thank you for your leadership. Certainly have known you a long time, and I know that you have been out in this community making sure that men, and now young men, are able to move forward in their lives by being a great mentor to them. I do want to also congratulate all the mentors. Thank you for giving up your time and your talent, and I'm sure your resources to help these young people. You certainly, I know, we all have families and certainly don't have to think about helping the next generation, but I just really appreciate that you're taking the time to be able to help to make sure these young people will be able to live their best quality of life. And so to you, Mr. Ellis, I'd just like to ask if there are individuals who'd want to become a part of this program, if people are watching this and say, "I'd like to have my son to be involved," how would they do that?
Well, we're located at New Birth, and if you know anything about New Birth, we welcome all. I remember over 10 years ago when we started this program, I said, "Pastor, I can't find enough men." He said, "Go to other churches." So all are welcome to come and help us. We meet a second and fourth Sundays, starting from 2:00 to 4:30. So everyone's welcome. You don't have to be a member. Even the youth don't have to be a member.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
President Pro Tem Stenziano. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. Yes, I do have a resolution this evening, and I am going to ask the representatives from the American Heart Association to walk towards the podium. I think Sophia Hicks is here, Brenda Houston, Krista Bustline, I think there may be others. So just please come up to the podium, please.
I also want to thank my colleagues for wearing red today, and lots of staff. So we know this is American Heart Association, wear red is really important to our community. And so the resolution is 0016X-2018, is to declare Friday, February 2nd of 2018 as Wear Red Day in the city of Columbus, and to increase awareness regarding cardiovascular disease as a leading cause of death among women. Whereas cardiovascular disease is the number-one killer of women, yet 80% of cardiac events can be prevented. Whereas cardiovascular disease and stroke kills one woman every 80 seconds in the United States, every 80 seconds. Whereas 90% of the women have one or more risk factors for developing heart disease, yet only one in five American women believe that heart disease is their greatest health threat. Whereas since 1984, more women than men have died each year from heart disease. And whereas women are likely to call 911 for themselves when experiencing symptoms of a heart attack, or less likely to call when they're having heart attacks, symptoms of a heart attack, than if they were with someone else who's having a heart attack. And whereas only 36% of African-American women and 34% of Hispanic women know that heart disease is their greatest health risk compared with 65% of Caucasian women. And whereas women involved with the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women movement live healthier lives and motivate other women to learn their family history and to meet with a healthcare provider to determine their risk for cardiovascular diseases and stroke. And whereas increasing awareness, speaking about heart disease, and empowering women to reduce their health for cardiovascular diseases can save thousands of lives each year. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, that this council recognizes the importance of the ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke, does hereby proclaim Friday, February 2nd of 2018 to be National Wear Red Day. And moreover, the city of Columbus urges its citizens to show support for women and fight in the fight against heart disease by commemorating this day by wearing red. And be it further resolved, that this council urges Columbus residents to wear red in recognition of family, friends, and neighbors who have suffered from heart disease as a show of support for women and cardiovascular disease. I move for adoption. Thank you.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
First, I would like to thank Councilwoman Tyson, Council President Harden, and all of the members of council. As a heart survivor, I'm thrilled to see the council calling attention to the number-one killer of women, heart disease, by supporting Go Red for Women again this year. According to the American Heart Association, there are more than 326,000 out-of-hospital cardiac arrest instances in 2015 and over 350 in 2017. Unfortunately, I became one of those instances when I experienced cardiac arrest on March 15, 2015, at the age of 32 years old. When this medical event occurred, I fell on my front side and my neck and landed, had landed on my ottoman that I had beside my bed. The markings on my body caused the medical staff to believe that it looks like I had been strangled when I arrived at the hospital. With this being a life-or-death situation, there was no time to communicate to the paramedics before continuing their lifesaving efforts, so the emergency personnel determined that it could be a domestic violence situation and involved the Columbus Police Department, who opened a homicide investigation. This caused more agony on my family and friends and also took away from Columbus Police working to solve actual crimes. I feel that there could be a better link of communication between the first responders and emergency personnel to avoid making these assumptions, no matter what facilities you are receiving care, and this will greatly help with reducing any additional suffering or confusion for families, and will also prevent the unnecessary involvement of agencies like Columbus Police Department wasting man time and man hours when they can be used for better public needs. Also, I feel that the priority of the hospital staff should have had been my treatment without making any judgments or assumptions before speaking to the personnel. So I also feel that health equality is more, is important, because I feel that everyone deserves the same access to healthcare without assumptions, no matter where they live or where they're being treated. So after that, I want to offer my most heartfelt appreciation to city council and Councilwoman Tyson, and support for creating a visual display throughout the city of Columbus to help the American Heart Association further their efforts in stopping the number-one killer of women. Your support is truly valuable, and we thank you all.
First off, I want to say thank you and echo Sophia's thanks to you, Councilwoman Tyson, to you, President Harden, and to the rest of the council members. I also want to give a heartfelt thanks to Sophia here, who bravely shared her story of survival. So thank you. The fact of the matter is, one in three women will die of some form of cardiovascular disease and stroke. Fortunately, it doesn't need to be that way. 80% of cardiovascular disease and stroke is preventable by taking action, knowing the warning signs, seeing your doctor, and knowing your family history. Go Red for Women fights to increase awareness, speaks out about heart disease, and empowers women to reduce their risk for cardiovascular diseases. With your support and proclaiming Wear Red Day in Columbus, we can raise awareness and rally support for all women to take action and change the odds, one heart at a time. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, and thanks for coming down. And certainly, Ms. Hicks, thank you for sharing that information in regards to what people thought your symptoms were and the situation. And I think that working with Councilmember Brown and certainly working with the administration, maybe there needs to be maybe some training in a situation like that, so people can recognize when women are going through actually cardiovascular distress. So I think that you've raised some awareness for us as to what we may need to do differently, because you're right. We want to make sure that our safety forces are definitely focusing on other situations, and we want to make sure that you and others get the proper medical treatment at the time. So thank you for sharing that. I'm so glad that you have our survivor, and I appreciate you for coming down and providing us with your testimony. And so to Ms. Houston and Ms. Bustline, I just also, I think every year that you come down just raises awareness for our community, and I really do appreciate that. And each of the council members, we have documents at our, at each of our desks. And that, again, to take this, share this with your family members and friends, because we want to make sure that we are, this is a preventable situation, and we want to do everything we can to make sure people live their full lives. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration, city attorney's office, city auditor, Ms. Cle? I see that we have members of our air commissions, Mr. McAllister from Greater Hilltop and Mr. Grinch from West Iota. Thank you so much for being here and your engagement. Are there any other requests by members of council for removal of ordinance or resolutions from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Clerk, will you now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee Ordinance 142-2018, Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 3X-2018, Economic Development and Small Business Committee Ordinance 0258-2018, Administration Committee Ordinance 250-2018, Judiciary and Court Administration Committee Ordinance 206, 210, and 211-2018, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 28, 118, 136, 148, 168, 174, 177, and 181-2018, Zoning Committee Ordinance is 254, 266, 255, and 256-2018.
The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinances' numbers of each into the record, please?
Resolutions of Expression 14X and 18X-2018, Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 91 and 92-2018, Public Safety Committee Ordinance is 163, 167, 176-2018, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 128, 135, and 188-2018, Administration Committee Ordinance 144, 146, 156, and 161-2018, Housing Committee Ordinance is 110, 166, 280, 281, 282, 283, 284, 285, 286, and 287-2018, Judiciary and Court Administration Committee Ordinance is 212 and 214-2018, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 3055, 3188-2017, and Ordinance is 2564, 65, 66, 80, 84, 95, 140, 141, 143-2018, Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 228 and 240-2018, Appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A0024 and 25-2018.
Seeing no speakers, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Clerk, call the roll by voice, please.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Stenziano?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Clerk, will you now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee Ordinance 142-2018, Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolution 3X-2018, Economic Development and Small Business Committee, Ordinance 0258-2018, Administration Committee, Ordinance 250-2018, Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, Ordinance 206, 210, and 211-2018, Public Utilities Committee, Ordinance 28, 118, 136, 148, 168, 174, 177, and 181-2018, Zoning Committee, Ordinance 254, 266, 255, and 256-2018.
The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those ordinances, numbers of each, into the record, please?
Resolutions of Expression 14X and 18X-2018, Recreation and Parks Committee, Ordinance 91 and 92-2018, Public Safety Committee, Ordinance 163, 167, 176-2018, Public Service and Transportation Committee, Ordinance 128, 135, and 188-2018, Administration Committee, Ordinance 144, 146, 156, and 161-2018, Housing Committee, Ordinance 110, 166, 280, 281, 282, 283, 284, 285, 286, and 287-2018, Judiciary and Court Administration Committee, Ordinance 212 and 214-2018, Public Utilities Committee, Ordinance 3055, 3188-2017, and Ordinance 25, 64, 65, 66, 80, 84, 95, 140, 141, 143-2018, Health and Human Services Committee, Ordinance 228 and 240-2018, Appointments from the Mayor's Office numbered A0024 and 25-2018.
Seeing no speakers, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Clerk, call the roll by voice, please.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Mr. Stenziano?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson? President Harden?
Yes, with the exception of 66-2018, upon which I am abstaining. Consent agenda items are passed with the notable exceptions. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown is chair.
Thank you, President Harden. In Finance tonight, we have ordinance 3008-2017 to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31st, 2018, for each of the several object classes for which the City of Columbus has to provide from the monies known to be in the treasury of said City of Columbus, and the fund known as the General Fund during the said 12 months, from the collection of all taxes and from other sources of revenue, the amount of $890,584,000, and to declare an emergency. The operating budget was first on the agenda at the November 20th, 2017 City Council meeting. At that time, it was tabled so that council and the public would have more opportunity to review it in detail. City Council held 13 public hearings since November 20th to review the budget with city departments and to receive feedback from the public. Thank you to Councilmember Tyson for leading that process. Tonight, we are removing the 2018 operating budget from the table for the purpose of amending it, with a final vote scheduled to take place at next Monday's council meeting. We will hold another public hearing in council chambers tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. due to the amendment to receive additional feedback from the public on these amendments, which include the budget for the Division of Police increasing by $500,000. The citywide transfer line has increased by $2,934,000. $500,000 will be deposited into the Public Safety Initiatives Fund. $2 million will be deposited into the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund. $434,000 will be deposited to the Job Growth Fund. We will review these amendments in detail at tomorrow's hearing and discuss the full budget in more detail before final vote next week. Anyone interested in providing testimony on these amendments will need to fill out a speaker slip at City Hall tomorrow before 4:00 p.m., and the hearing will be broadcast on CTV. Are there any questions from my colleagues? I first move to remove the ordinance from the table.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
I then request to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And I move to table, I request to table for one more week to February 5th, 2018.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 3009-2017 to make appropriations and transfers for the 12 months ending December 30th, 2018, for other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance has been amended upward by a total of $763,964. Increases are within the Fleet Operating Fund and four Department of Public Utilities Funds to reflect changes in the bond interest and principal payments due in 2018. The Department of Technology's Information Services Operating Fund is decreased by $529,494, which largely is a technical correction to their bookkeeping. Lastly, the Department of Human Resources Employee Benefits Fund is increased by $90,875 to account for the payroll of a position that was not initially budgeted. Seeing no questions, I request to remove from the table.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
I request to amend as submitted to the clerk.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And then I move to table to one week from now, February 5th, 2018.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Next, we have ordinance 3010-2017 to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31st, 2018, for selected other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. This appropriation is primarily directed at ensuring the city is fulfilling its debt service payment obligations. Emergency action is being considered to allow the financial transaction to be posted in the city's accounting system as soon as possible. Seeing no questions from my colleagues, I move to take from the table.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 3237-2017 to authorize an appropriation of $7,789,445 in various divisions and object levels of the Community Development Block Grant Fund, to provide funding for approved programs and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the appropriation of funds that are a part of the city's Consolidated Action Plan. City Council held a hearing on October 25th, 2017 to review the plan, with each department receiving funds before approval on October 30th. I thank Councilmember Tyson for her leadership on that hearing as well. These dollars come from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Programs, including Community Development Block Grants, or CDBG, Home Investment Partnerships, or HOME, Emergency Solutions Grants, or ESG, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, or HAPWA, and are administered by various city departments. In total, this appropriation to fund the Consolidated Action Plan represents a continuing commitment to provide expanded housing options and economic opportunities for Columbus residents. There are no questions from my colleagues. I move to take from the table.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. And finally, in Finance, we have ordinance 0175-2018 to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order to Suitfin Corporation for the purchase of three Suitfin Monarch Custom Pumpers, and the purchase and installation of all pertinent equipment to be utilized on the respective vehicles for the Division of Fire from an existing Cooperative State of Ohio Term Contract with Suitfin Corporation, to authorize the expenditure from the Safety Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the purchase of these three new fire engines for the Division. The Division has employed this particular type of engine on frontline emergency response runs since 2011. It is considered the best available for its firefighting capabilities and its durability. The three new engines will replace three current vehicles that are beyond their useful life due to high maintenance costs. The purchase price for the new engines is comparable to other fire engine purchases in recent years. Emergency action is being considered so that these important pieces of equipment can be put to use as soon as possible to protect Columbus residents. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
That's all I have in my committees, President Harden.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in Recreation and Parks, there is ordinance 3336-2017 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks entering to contract with Pazuti Solutions LLC for the assistance in the program management of the redevelopment of Linden Park, to authorize the expenditure of $50,010 from the Recreation and Parks Fund, to waive the competitive procurement provisions of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. This is an exciting piece of legislation. It is just one part of the total redevelopment of Linden Park, and it was decided by the Department in early 2017 to reinvest in the Linden community, and particularly the community center, and do a total redevelopment of that park. And I think that it's just one of the pieces to the puzzle to begin to redevelop and reinvest back in the Linden community. Are there any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage by voice.
Second.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson? President Harden?
Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Councilmember Paige. The next committee we have is Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Remy chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in the committee, we have three ordinances to go over, and at the end, I would ask Deputy Director Kelly Skokoe to talk about a pothole and the strategies that we use within the department for that. First, we have ordinance 3085-2017 to amend the 2017 capital improvements budget to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and between projects with the Storm Water General Obligation Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a construction and guarantee minimum, excuse me, maximum reimbursement agreement with Campus Partners for Community Urban Redevelopment, Inc., relative to the Arterial Street Rehabilitation 15th and High Project, to authorize the expenditure of $1 million from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, and $1 million from the Storm Water General Obligation Fund, and to declare an emergency. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? Seeing none, if there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Next, we have ordinance 0200-2018 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the Warner Road Phase II roadway improvements and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Finally, we have ordinance 225-2018 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the ADA ramps project, citywide curb ramps, public improvement project, and to declare an emergency. Any questions from my colleagues? All right, then I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Deputy Director Skokoe?
Thank you, Chairman Remy. President Harden and members of City Council, I'm Deputy Director Kelly Skokoe on behalf of Public Service Director Jennifer Gallagher. January has been a very busy month with patching potholes for our department due to freezing and thawing conditions. From January 1st to January 28th, we have filled, well, we have received 879 service requests. That's through last night. We received just, we've received 30 of them over the weekend. That's up from 410, almost double from what we had during that same period last year. So we are having an extreme freezing and thawing winter when it comes to patching potholes. So we have this policy in practice in place. The process for patching potholes begins two different ways. The residents can contact 311 to notify the city of the location of the pothole. We typically ask them to give us either the nearest intersection, a business, a home address, so that we can locate the pothole that they're describing. And the potholes are then, or the requests are then forwarded to our department to be investigated and scheduled for the pothole repair. Or separately, the other way is that the Division of Infrastructure can identify them out in their normal practices, and they create the service request, and they deploy and proactively, you know, go out there and fill the potholes. The city standard for filling potholes is typically that we ask that they get patched within three days, particularly of the 311 service request. The standard may go beyond the three days because of a very large volume of potholes being reported. In these instances, the standard is to patch potholes as soon as possible, or a snow, ice, or rainstorm prohibits patch hole patching. So that we, right now, we have crews working five days a week, both day and night, patching as many potholes as we can. We're at 85.5% compliance of that three-day review for the 879 service requests that we've received this month. So we've, 85% of the time, been filling them within the three days. And we would have been out there working on Saturday, we had our crews ready to go. However, the rain was, you know, causing it not to be able to, the potholes not being able to be patched, because we can't fill potholes when they're, you know, filled with rain. So that really makes it very difficult. I think that for those residents, I would strongly advise them to go to 311, let us know about their potholes, and we'll try to get them filled. I mean, there's been a lot of requests, and we're trying to get them filled as fast as possible. I'm here for any additional questions you may have, Chairman, or members of council.
Councilmember Stenziano?
Thank you, Chairman. And I know it doesn't fall under the department, but if people do have damage to their vehicle, where do you direct them, or how does 311 take those calls? I think the state has a program or gives a little guidance, and curious if you could provide any feedback on that process.
So it does fall to our department. We will typically repair, or we will pay for a repair if someone calls in, makes a 311 service request. We get back and figure out if somebody had made a request to have the pothole filled within those three days. So if we knew about the pothole, and it can be proven that we did not fill it within our service agreement timeframe, which is three days, then we would pay for the repair.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Thank you, Deputy Director Skokoe, appreciate it.
No problem.
President Harden, do you mind if I move into Administration? Thank you very much. Tonight in Administration Committee, we have ordinance number 157-2018 to authorize the Director of Department of Human Resources to enter into a contract with a law firm of Baker &amp; Hostetler for the purpose of providing assistance with collective bargaining negotiations and related activities, to authorize the expenditure of $358,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of this Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. Director Brandon, could you talk about the waiver of competitive bidding in this case?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Remy, President Harden, members of council. This does authorize our office to enter into contract with the firm Baker &amp; Hostetler, who has assisted us over several contract negotiation cycles in our both negotiating and interpreting contract during arbitrations and things of that nature. At this time, waiving competitive bidding ensures consistency with one set of negotiations to the next. It allows the firm to provide some continuity and experience with the city's collective bargaining agreements, and their expertise continues to be beneficial to the city achieving a good outcome. At this time, we are continuing to negotiate with the Fraternal Order of Police and International Association of Firefighters. Both of those rounds of negotiations began in 2017, and it does make sense for us to continue to work with this firm, who is continuing to lead the negotiation efforts with those two units. So we are asking to waive competitive bidding. We do believe it's in the best interest of the city at this time, and ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Brandon. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Finally, we have ordinance number 16, sorry. Finally, we have ordinance number 164-2018 to accept the Memorandum of Understanding Number 2018-01 executed between Representatives of the City of Columbus and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Ohio Council 8, Ask Me Local 1632, which amends the collective bargaining agreement April 1st, 2017 through March 31st, 2020, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
That is all I have in my committees this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chair Remy. Next committee is the Economic Development and Small Business Committee. The chair is Councilmember Chairwoman Paige.
Thank you, President Harden. In Economic Development and Small Business, we have ordinance 0162-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a downtown office incentive agreement with Telco Pros, Inc. Telco Pros, Inc. has quickly grown from a single-owner-operator business to employing over 30 full-time procurement experts. Telco Pros Incorporated intends to lease, renovate, and occupy approximately 1,960 square feet of office space at 274 Marconi Boulevard in the Arena District. It also anticipates retaining and relocating five existing full-time permanent positions with an annual payroll of approximately $360,000, and expects to create 12 new full-time permanent positions with an associated annual payroll of approximately $800,000. And Telco is requesting a downtown office incentive from the City of Columbus to assist in the expansion of operations in Columbus. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden. Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And my final ordinance is 0218-2018 to accept the application 8N17-009 of Beazee Management Partners et al. for the annexation of certain territory containing approximately 26.3 acres and Blenden Township, and I would like to move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and that's all I have, President Harden.
Thank you Chair Page. The next committee we have is Public Utilities. President Protem Stenziano is the Chair.
Thank you President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward six ordinances. First one is Ordinance 3051-2017 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of plant, manufacturer, specific parts, equipment, and services for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and authorize the expenditure of $1,070,000 from the Sewage Operating Fund. The parts, materials, and services from these contracts are used to maintain and repair equipment and for the rehabilitation of various processes used in the sewer treatment process throughout the Jackson Pike and Southernly wastewater treatment plants. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Next, Ordinance 3309-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Elite Excavating Company of Ohio Incorporated for the Dewberry Road Area Waterline Improvements Project, to waive the provisions of competitive bidding, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $4,011,568.61 from the Water Systems Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $4,011,568.61 from the expenditure up to $559,705.63 within the Water General Obligations Bond Fund, to authorize an expenditure of up to $312,785.95 within the Storm Sewer Bond Fund to provide for payment of inspection, material, testing, and related services to the Department of Public Service, Design and Construction Division, and to amend the 2017 capital improvements budget for the Divisions of Water and Sewage and Drainage. The goal of this water project is to replace and rehabilitate the existing six-inch and eight-inch water lines that have had a high break frequency. Replacement of these water lines will improve water service, decrease burden on water maintenance operations, and reduce water loss. The goal of the Storm Water Project is to improve drainage along Elwood Avenue and the rear properties along Stan Bob Avenue and eliminate street and yard flooding throughout the area. Elite Excavating Company of Ohio submitted the lowest bid, however, their construction prequalification status lapsed on October 6, 2017. The Office of Construction Prequalification gave Elite Excavating permission to submit their prequalification application past the application season and considers them responsible at the time of their status expiration and prequalified during the November 15, 2017 bid opening. I know that was a lot to explain, a lot of tongue twisters. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Next, Ordinance 3314-2017 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Kenmore Construction Company Incorporated for the Allen Creek Pump Station Miscellaneous Improvements Project, and to authorize an expenditure up to $1,184,500 within the Water General Obligation Bonds Fund for the Division of Water. The Allen Creek Pump Station is an integral part of the water supply for the Hap Creamian Water Plant. When the water elevations of the Hoover Reservoir are low and precipitation forecast is less than desired, the Allen Creek Pump Station is utilized to pump water from the Allen Creek Reservoir to the Hoover Reservoir, which supplies water for the Hap Creamian Water Plant. This project will provide needed improvements to the Allen Creek Pump Station in order to ensure an adequate and safe supply of drinking water to the Columbus service area, which, as we know, is essential to our economic growth and development. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance 0072-2018 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to all associate, associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for the purchase of rental of construction equipment with an operator for the Department of Public Utilities, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,460,000 from the Sewage Operating Fund and $75,000 from the Water Operating Fund. These services will be used to rent equipment with an operator for various projects beyond the scope of our currently owned equipment. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance 0082-2018 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement for the purchase of sewer treatment chemicals for the Division of Sewage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,430,000 from the Sewage Operating Fund. The purchase of chemicals such as polymer, liquid sodium bisphthalate, furic chloride, and sodium hypochlorite are necessary for the sewer treatment process. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
And last, ordinance 0083-2018 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate current and pending universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of water treatment chemicals for the Division of Water and authorize expenditure of $16,400,000 from the Water Operating Fund. Similar to the previous ordinance, this will purchase chemicals, but instead of messing up all those names, know that we have been very cautious and careful that these are the appropriate things for the clean water that we provide. If there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I'll move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
That's all we have in our committee tonight, President Harden.
Thank you Chair Stenziano. Our final committee this evening is Health and Human Services. Councilmember Tyson is Chair.
Thank you, thank you. I have one ordinance this evening. It's ordinance Number 0238-2018, and as I'm reading the ordinance, I'm going to ask Stephen Snyder-Hill to start walking towards the podium, because he's going to share some information regarding the different programs that are being funded with these dollars. It is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to accept the grant service contract from the Franklin County Alcohol, Drug Addiction, and Mental Health Services Board in the amount of $1,716,206.46 to authorize the appropriation of $2,128,206.48, which includes program revenues to the Health Department and the Health Department's Grants Fund, and to declare an emergency. And Mr. Snyder-Hill, the floor is yours to explain some of the programs that will be funding all these dollars, and how people in the community can utilize those. The floor is yours.
Sure. Thank you for Councilmember Tyson, and Council President Harden, and Council. Closed Public Health Drug and Alcohol Services Program has been making a strong impact in the community. It's been hit hard by overdose and substance use disorders. Our programming is broken into three components: prevention, comprehensive treatment, and harm reduction programming. Our basic strategy and programming is to build coping mechanisms and resiliency skills with our youth. Our prevention programming will serve roughly 9,210 clients ages 8 to 24. This funding also includes an immigrant women's program that does a lot of outreach to our Hispanic female population. Our comprehensive treatment program is expanding to include medication-assisted treatment this year to provide people with substance use disorders through general fund expansion money, thank you very much Council, from the City of Columbus. Introducing this expansion will increase our client's success rate in breaking addiction and lowering relapse rates. Our treatment program was cutting-edge before and works with a large population of referrals coming from the criminal justice system and Franklin County Children's Services. This year, we're implementing new evidence-based counseling curriculum CBISA, and we've also expanded treatment groups to include holistic approaches to treatment, including things like nutrition, yoga, to increase the success of breaking dependence on substances. With the additional funding from Adam H. that you just mentioned, our MAP program that we're expanding will offer Vivitrol and Suboxone to clients that don't have insurance or couldn't pay for it themselves. We also have a cutting-edge harm reduction program, and the purpose of this programming is to reduce harm with people, for people with substance use disorders. Some of the initiatives of this program are working with the SafePoint program to reduce the spread of hepatitis and HIV in an already marginalized community of people with substance use disorders. Our staff go out and provide testing to people with addiction, as well as people in the recovery community to provide linkage to care for people who test positive for hepatitis or HIV. Our program has been instrumental in reducing the number of syringes found in the community by introducing syringe collection boxes, as well as our staff going out and personally being involved in community cleanup events, of which I've been part of as well, which also eliminates trash in our neighborhoods. Our program has also taken back drug, done drug take-back initiatives, as well as training our community residents on the administration of naloxone, a life-saving drug for people experiencing an overdose. This is referred to as our NEOP program, but this year, we're going to expand it to a NESAOP program, which will focus on street outreach. The intent is to directly impact people who need access to this life-saving drug in the event of an overdose. Our ADS program of Columbus Public Health is so important to addressing these many issues that affect our community, we're constantly evolving and being equipped to address the challenges that we will continue to face in this ever-changing face of addiction. Thank you very much.
Thank you Mr. Snyder-Hill, any questions? Thank you for coming down and sharing the programs, not only with this council and the audience that's here, but our viewing and listening audience, as the community realizes that the issue of addiction in our community displays, creates difficulties for the community, but most importantly, families. And so, I felt it was really important for you to come down and share the comprehensive programs that are at Columbus Public Health, that individuals in this community can utilize those programs, again, to be able to move forward in their lives. So, thank you for coming. And the last thing I'll ask you was that could you please share with the viewing and listening audience how they could get in contact with Columbus Public Health to utilize these services?
Sure, you can call the Columbus Public Health Department, and they will, they will put you in contact with our Alcohol and Drug Services Program. We take walk-ins, we will, we'll do same-day service to residents if they call us, and we appreciate the opportunity to come down and brag about our services because we do a great job.
Thank you Mr. Snyder-Hill, and with that, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you Chair Tyson. Seeing no further business before council, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Regular meeting number five is adjourned. We will take the first speaker shortly. Clerk call the roll, please.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the Journal? Clerk call the roll, please.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee, and all members serve on it. Councilmember, our Chair Tyson.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I will briefly explain the rules of the council as pertaining to the speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side. And we provide, and we will provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. The first ordinance is 0186-2018 to rezone 8835 South Old State Road, being 10.45 plus or minus acres located in the northeast corner of South Old State Road and Candlelight Lane, and on the south side of Candlelight Lane, 250 plus or minus feet east of the South, South Old State Road from our rural district to L.A.R.D., A.R.L.D., Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Arlington Properties. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development, and the City Department's recommendation is approval. The Far North Columbus Communities Coalition recommendation is approval. I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll, please.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next is 0187-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3333.02, AR12, A.R.L.D., and AR1 Apartment Residential District use, 3333.16 fronting, 3333.255 perimeter yard, and 3333.35G private garage of the Columbus City Codes for the property located, located on 8835 South Old State Road, to permit multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the L.A.R.L.D. Limited Apartment Residential District. The applicant is Arlington Properties. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Far North Communities Coalition's recommendation is approval. Fair, no, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0204-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.03, R1 Residential District of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 4040 Morris Road, to permit an electric substation for, in the R1 Residential District. The applicant is Jesse Lee. The proposed use is an electronic substation expansion. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval. I move for passage and ask for a voice, voice vote.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Remy?
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0216-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Section 3363.01, M Manufacturing District of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 244 South Glenwood Avenue, to permit a single-unit dwelling in the M Manufacturing District. The applicant is Chris Sherman. It's Chris Sherman here. Okay. The proposed use is a single-unit dwelling. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Franklin County Area Commission's recommendation is approval. Mr. Sherman, do you need to have any conversation with this body tonight?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, and I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0219-2018 to rezone 4987 Gender Road, being 1.2-plus acres located on the west side of Gender Road, 120 plus or minus feet north of Chelsea Glen Drive from LC2 Limited Commercial District to LM Limited Manufacturing District. The applicant is J. Johnson Investments LLC. The proposed use is a self-storage facility. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Greater Southeast Air Commission's recommendation is approval. I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
President Harden, the floor is yours.
Thank you Chair Tyson. Next in zoning, we have 0208-2018 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.037, R2F Residential District, 331221A, Landscaping and Screening, 3312.49, Minimum Number of Parking Spaces Required, 3332.14, R2F Area District Requirements, and 3332.21D, Building Lines of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 7989 North 17th Street, to permit a 30-unit apartment building with the reduced development standards in the R2F Residential District, and to repeal ordinance Number 1325-96 passed June 24, 1996 as a council variance. The applicant is Mark Lemire. The proposed use is a multi-unit residential development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Near East Area Commission recommendation is approval. Can I first ask for a staff presentation?
Good evening. The site consists of 10 parcels zoned in the R2F Residential District, and it is developed with a pri- with a private charitable club as permitted by ordinance number 1325-96. The applicant proposes to redevelop the site with a 30-unit apartment building. A council variance is required because the R-2F District only permits single and two-unit dwellings. Variances for required parking lot trees, lot area, and building lines are included in this request. Additionally, the applicant proposes a reduction in the required number of parking spaces from 45 to 10. The site is within the boundaries of the Near East Area Plan, which recommends high-density residential mixed-use development at this location. The proposal is consistent with the plan's recommendation and is compatible with the development pattern of this area. Therefore, staff's recommendation is for approval, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pine. Is there a representative from the applicant present this evening? You come.
Ms. Brongers?
Thank you. Can I, we have two speakers that are coming to speak against this ordinance. Ms. Tanja Finch. So would we go for, Representative, would you give an additional presentation before I have the folks speak against this ordinance? You can come to the podium.
Again, I'm Janice Brongers with Moody &amp; Olin Architects. And the proposed development is a 30-unit residential building that will house 30 youth that are coming out of foster care. It's developed by the Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority, and currently there are similar development across the streets. We believe this is really going to be an asset for the community. There are patios and different enhancements for the residents that are, that are part of the project.
Thank you. Next, I will call up the Ms. Tanja Finch. Ms. Tanja, welcome to council. If you would come to the podium, you have three minutes to speak. At this time, you are, as you're speaking against this ordinance.
I am an adjacent landowner speaking in opposition to this project. The factors to be considered in weighing whether this property owner, whether this property owner should be granted these variances are, one, whether the property in question will yield a reasonable return, or whether there can be any beneficial use of the property without the variance. This is a profitable and established area where a landowner can build within bounds of the zoning code and see reasonable return on their investment. The existing code allows for beneficial use of the property without a variance. Whether the variance is substantial, the variances as proposed are exceedingly substantial. First, there are eight total variances. The sheer number of variances suggests a substantial deviation from the code. 331249, the developer wants to reduce the required parking spaces from 45 spaces to 10 spaces. This is only 22% of the required number of parking spaces. 3332.037, the developer desires to change the use designation from a two-family use district to a 30-unit apartment building. 333214, the developer desires to reduce the required 6,000 square feet per unit to 900 square feet per unit. The developer is attempting to reduce the requirements to an astounding 15% of the code requirements. 3332, to squeeze a 12,500-square-foot building on a footprint of 29,620 is substantial. The building will cover 42% of the lot. 3332.21, the developer wants to build with a zero-foot setback. In effect, the developer desires to negate this requirement completely. 3332.25, the developer is seeking to reduce the side yard from 16 feet to 7 feet. This is only 43% compliance with the requirement. 3332.26, the developer seeks to reduce the required side yard of 5 feet to a zero setback. This is 100% deviation from the zoning code. Whether the essential character of the neighborhood would be substantially altered, or whether adjoining properties would suffer, and as an adjacent landowner, I believe that granting these variances will negatively affect the value of my property due to the project's proximity to my property, the size, the scale, en masse of the project, and the destruction of the neighborhood's character. Whether the property owner purchased a property with knowledge of the zoning restriction, the property owners absolutely purchased the property without knowledge of the zoning restriction. They were well aware of the zoning classification when they purchased the property. Therefore, they have created a self-imposed hardship which cannot be used to support the zoning variances they are asking for. Whether the property owner's predicament feasibly can be a... I'll stop there and let my husband...
Thank you, Ms. Finch. We have councilmembers might have a couple of questions for you, if that's okay. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, President Harden. Just, did you share these concerns with NEAC?
With who?
It's the Northeast Area Commission. So they approved it kind of as the neighborhood representative to some extent, and so I was curious.
We were, we were neither aware that this was coming up.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we were right next door. We're the only house sitting there, because on the other side, you know, there is an apartment building, but we're right there.
Thank you, Ms. Finch. Any additional questions? Councilmember Remy.
Can, can somebody explain to me why you, she wouldn't have been notified? I mean, it's a requirement.
Councilmember Remy, members of council, President Harden. The notification requirements are only for this public hearing. There is nothing codified that requires an area commission to notify for their meetings. I know that the Department of Neighborhoods is working on and has a postcard program. I do not know if all of the area commissions are using those postcards.
Thank you, Ms. Finch. If you don't mind, we'll take Mr. Finch, and then we'll ask the applicant to come back up, and, and councilmembers might have additional questions. Mr. Finch, welcome to council. Would you, again, please state your name and address and any organization that you may represent?
Sure. My name is Michael, middle, middle name is Anthony, last name is Finch. My address is 73 North 17th Street, Columbus, Ohio 43203. Thank you, council.
Of course.
I just basically want to say that we've been in this house for 47 years. We've raised, it's three generations in this house now, my grandchildren. I have three. I worry about being crowded into this neighborhood where the kids can't even go out of the yard to play. We have very little frontage now, and according to this, this project, those 10 parking spaces is not enough. Those parking requires more than 10. So therefore, anyone coming to this, this, this project would have to park out on the street. We currently have one already built across the street from us, and so it makes it very difficult for the kids. I worry about the kids running out in the street. It's very narrow. That street is probably, probably not a good, you know, 20 feet wide, but with the cars parking on both sides of the street, it makes it very difficult for the kids to play in. I, I worry about the kids more than anything, and I understand that, you know, things like this are good. Everybody needs, you know, an opportunity to, to advance and better their lives, but we worry about our kids. And again, we've been there 47 years, and I would just hate to have this neighborhood just taken away, because, again, that's, that's our livelihoods, and we, we'd like to stay there, and we'd like for our kids to be able to stay there and, and play like, like normal kids, you know, not normal neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Michael Finch? Councilmember Brown.
Mr. Finch, the place that's across the street, you said, where do they park their cars?
They, right now, there, it's my understanding, there are some parking in the back, but not enough. You can see, you can start to see, especially on the weekends, you can start to see cars parked, you know, on, on the street. And where, you know, we were able to, you know, you could park right in front. Now, we have to, even to go to our house, we sometimes have to go to the back alley and park in the back, in the back of the yard, where there's really not parking, but we make parking for it, because we have no parking because of that, you know, the project across the street from us.
And so this new project, what do you think will happen with the, with the parking?
I, there's, there's no, excuse me.
The obvious, you said that we park out in the street. Where, what do you think is going to happen?
Well, again, I think it poses, in my mind, it poses a danger to some of these kids who are, who are playing and running out in the street after the ball, because you can't see, you really can't see cars coming both ways. I mean, you'd have to step out in the street to see cars coming down there now, because of the cars parking on both sides, all the way down the street now. And so to answer your, your original question, some of those cars are still parking. I've noticed that they're, they're, they're in front of the, the project, I call it the project, but it's a, it's a housing project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, President Harden. Have you all expressed any of these concerns with the new property owner seeking the variances?
Councilman, this is the first we, I believe my wife could probably tell you when we first received notice, but we had never been contacted by anyone to say that, you know, we're going to build, we're thinking about building this, this housing project, and we got a notice in the mail, and that was the first we heard, heard of it.
Thank you, Mr. Finch. I'm going to give an opportunity for the representative from Moody &amp; Olin and the applicant to come back up, please, and, and respond to the questions that Mr. and Mrs. Finch have for us. Thank you, sir.
So yes, so in respect of the neighborhood, obviously, the proposed design really takes clues from what's across the street. It's a similar building, similar number of stories. We're looking to complement the selected materials to be similar in character to what's in the neighborhood. We do not anticipate additional need for parking. These youth that will live in this building, they don't have cars. In fact, one of the staff members or the NEAC members is a social worker, is very familiar with this project, and, you know, she clearly stated, yes, I understand that these kids don't have cars, and there will be very little need for parking. So therefore, we think that the provided parking is very appropriate for the proposed development. We have been working with NEAC. In fact, we came one time, and they had several comments that we took very seriously from the neighborhood, and we went back to the drafting board and redesigned the project to satisfy their requirements. And similarly, with City of Columbus planning staff, they had a series of comments that were all addressed throughout the process. So it's been a lengthy process, and we've been very diligent, working to be responsive to those requirements. We anticipate applying for a tax credit application that's due in February, so if we don't secure approval now, we're basically off the running list to be eligible to receive those tax credits projects to move forward with the project. So I would like to bring that for your consideration as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you, President Harden. Can you explain again, in a little more detail, the time you took with NEAC? Was it just two meetings? I know they are very thorough. They have really high standards, and, you know, they are concerned about the impact it could have for neighbors and neighborhood. So could you walk a little bit further through how long that process was, kind of, that got us to this point?
Yeah, sure. So we started working in the project since the month of, I believe, October. We actually had the first presentation. I was really not prepared to say exact dates, but in the fall, we had a meeting with them, and then we had a further meeting onsite, and there were several neighbors that came to see the site and the proposed development. So actually, we're probably three meetings as part of that, and then the final third presentation, where we received their support for the project. That was in December, yeah.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you, Council President Harden. With the tax credit, I'm very familiar with the, this type of project. If, and Shannon, you can weigh in as well, but, but if the, if you aren't awarded the tax credits, is there a site plan, you know, very specific site plan, so that somebody else can't come in and put a different type of a project in there with the variances that we would make tonight if we were to approve them?
The site plan that's included with this council variance is very specific to this particular development, so if anything else was proposed, it would require a, a new council variance, or it would need to be developed in accordance with the R-2F District.
Thank you.
Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
The neighbors that you mentioned who did attend meetings that you did, how did, how did they know about it? Do you know? How they know about the presentation you're making?
I mean, to my understanding, it's a public meeting. It, it's every month, and it's an established schedule, and there's always many people that show up. So when we are there, it's our understanding that we are, you know, seeking the feedback from the neighborhood. We're really not trying to hide that. I mean, very much part of the tax credit application is that you really work with the neighborhood, and that we really strive to do that, to get all the opinion and all the feedback, to make it part of the project.
Good. Thank you.
Councilmember Page.
Thank you, President Harden. If you were not to receive the tax credits for this project, have you thought through what would be the next step?
That is something that CMHA will have to respond. It's possible, these projects are very tight in the way they get financed, so it's possible that they may reconsider whether or not they develop it. Now, they're very committed to this cause, so it's possible that they would try to find other ways, but it's, it's definitely, it caught substantially the amount of funding for the project, so.
Explain the timeline for me for the tax credit, just so I can understand when this would need to, if you, when you're requesting it to pass, so that you could still be...
Yes, sure. So it's a, for Ohio, so these are competitive tax credits that are, for Ohio, they get submitted middle of February, and with that, you have to submit a letter that you have all the zoning and all the, that the city will support the development as proposed, essentially. And then in May, you get awarded, and then you move forward with the construction documents. So it's once a year.
I'm going to, I actually, I'm going to ask one, one more, this is what I would like to have happen. I would like for CMHA and for the folks who came down this evening to have a chance to have a conversation. We, I'm going to, so I'm going to move to table this, this piece of legislation until our next meeting, which is one week from now, which will still allow for timing, but that way it will give opportunity for CMHA and the neighbors to this direct housing to have, at least have a conversation. And I think that that would make me feel comfortable, a little bit more comfortable, that at least that appropriate outreach was done, and then we can come back for a conversation next week.
Okay.
So with that, I would like to move to table until our next meeting. Clerk, call the roll. Come again. By voice, please.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
Abstain.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance table. That is all that we have before us this evening in zoning committee. If there are no further business, this meeting is adjourned.